On June the 7th, alright? So that will put us in a position to be able to meet, meet in person next June for the June meeting. The, the Port of Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners are held on the 3rd Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM. All meetings are conducted at the PRHA's main office, 3116 South Street. Unless otherwise noted, all members of the public are welcome to attend. So I'm gonna call the meeting order and Ms. Marshall, if you could do the roll call, please?
Of course. Commissioner Barrow.
Here.
Commissioner Coss.
Here.
Commissioner Jigget.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Commissioner Wick.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Here.
Chair LaLonde.
Sure, very good, thank you very, very much. Ed, I'll pass it to you, did you want to introduce the auditor?
Okay, Commissioners, we have an auditor that finished our fiscal year for 2019. We'll be doing a presentation, Korn and Resnick. And I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon to kind of introduce the players.
Hello, everyone, how are you this evening?
Fine.
And you?
Hi.
Well, this is such a great accomplishment to get this off the books. This was our first audit, changing the auditing firms to Korn Resnick. And we have Eric Rumberger, who led the audit and worked with us very diligently to get this all done and submitted up to HUD and the Federal Clearing House. So Eric, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks Shannon, and everyone, it's great to be here. I'm trying to pull up the financial statements right now, so hopefully you all can see that. And as Shannon said, this was our first year working on the audit for you guys and there were definitely some growing pains as it, you know, takes a little while to get up to speed on exactly what you guys do and how you do it. And then coupled with the COVID coming in, it took a little bit longer than expected, but we're all done now, everything's finalized. We've submitted the filing to React and submitted to the Federal Audit Clearing House. So we should be all set on those fronts. So the first thing I wanted to share with you with the financial statements is the first of our three opinions that we'll go over. The first is our independent auditors' report on the financial statements. And the first paragraph of this report, it discusses what the financial statements are that we have audited and for what period. And then the next paragraph discusses management's responsibility. These aren't management's financial statements. And then the next two paragraphs discuss our responsibility as the auditors and it's our responsibility to express opinion on the financial statements. And this paragraph, this first paragraph in the auditor's responsibility is a little bit longer than the normal opinion because in this case, we actually did not do audits of the separately audited, discreetly presented component units and three of the blended component units, which were audited by other auditors. So it's important that we call those out. And because of the timing of your year-end of this audit, which is June 30, 2019, it's actually the December 31st, 2018 year-end numbers that are included for those entities. And going forward, as we've become the auditors for those entities since then, on future reports, this language won't be in there because our Baltimore team does those audits and we can say that as one audit team together, we've audited all the entities in. And then the next paragraph is our opinion paragraph, and this is what everyone wants to pay attention to. Portsmouth received what's noted as an unmodified opinion. So it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the results of operation." So a clean audit opinion, no issues with any of the financial statement numbers that are presented. The next section is discussing required supplementary information, and that is the management's discussion and analysis and also pension-related schedules. And this paragraph calls out that those schedules and that information is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, but it is not part of the basic financial statements and our procedures were limited with respect to those areas. So we did not audit that information. And you'll notice in the financial statements, those are highlighted in those areas as unaudited. So this just calls out that those were unaudited and we do not express an opinion over those sections. The next two paragraphs are what covers the other information, and that is on the HUD Financial Data Schedule, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And those are part of the financial statements and we do do enough work on those sections and those areas to render an opinion. So in this case, on those two areas, we also issue what's called an "in relation to opinion." So the last sentence says, "In our opinion, the HUD Financial Data Schedule and Schedule of Federal Awards are fairly stated." So again, an unmodified opinion with respect to those items. And the last paragraph in our opinion refers to our, the second of our three opinions that we give. And it's our Government Auditing Standards Report. And so that just calls out, there is this other report that accompanies the financial statements and it's important for readers of the financials to know that report is there and to take a look at that as well. So I'm gonna jump to the back to that next report, which is our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters in accordance with government auditing standards. So it's important to note, this is on the internal controls as it relates to the financial statements, the financial numbers that are presented. And similar to the other opinions, the first paragraph describes what we've audited and as of when, and also calls out that, hey, these other opinion units that were included weren't audited by us. So it makes the reader aware of that as well. And the next couple of paragraphs discuss internal control. What is internal control and what deficiencies in internal control look like? And it describes what our purpose is in testing this. So given our limitations on what we've tested, we did not identify anything that's a material weakness and there were no other significant deficiencies or reportable conditions to report. And then the next paragraph, the compliance, that discusses compliance as it relates to financial statement presentation. And again, in this case, we're not issuing an opinion on compliance here, but rather we're calling out, there were no items that we noted that had to be reported to the board in this case, which is exactly what you want to see. And then the third of our opinions is our independent auditors' report on compliance for each major federal program and internal control on compliance with those major programs. So this is where the federal dollars are spent, making sure that you've spent them correctly and complied with all the rules. So the first paragraph again discusses what did we do, what did we audit, when did we audit it as of? And then management's responsibility, which is to maintain compliance with the regulations, and then our responsibility, which is to express an opinion on compliance. So much like the opinion on the overall financial statements, the last paragraph down there, our opinion on each major federal program is an unmodified opinion. So it says that Portsmouth complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements it's required to follow. So again, exactly what you want to see there, no compliance issues to report. And then the last several paragraphs, very similar to the Government Auditing Standards Report, it talks about internal controls and what weaknesses could be in internal controls and that there were none in this case that were required to be reported. And again, that's internal controls specifically over the compliance aspects rather than the financial statement aspects. And then the next schedule, this is what's called our Schedule of Findings and Questions, Coss. I really dislike the title of this because it says Schedule of Findings and everyone hears that and says, oh, there must be problems, there's findings. But it's what we found as a result of our audit, it's more the results of what's going on here. And it basically just summarizes what's in those other opinions. And then it also identifies what are those major federal programs that were tested this year? Because in the Uniform Guidance Standards, we don't have to test every federal program every year. There's some leeway on what we can test and when we have to test it. And so in this case, the major programs this year were public and Indian housing, the Public Housing Capital Fund, and then the FEMA grant money. So that is all of our opinions and the Schedules of Findings and Question Costs. I did want to flip back up into the financial statements. There's this section on new accounting updates and I just wanted to highlight a couple here to show there are some new things coming down that could have some impact on the authority. The first is GASB Statement 87, which is leases. So this is to align governmental accounting standards with the private company accounting standards that are out there regarding leases where essentially there will be no such thing as an operating lease anymore. If you enter into a long-term lease over a year, you'll have a capitalized asset and a liability for what you're gonna have to pay out over the term of that lease and then you'll amortize the cost of that lease into expense across the life of the lease. And another one that's very, very similar to the leases is Statement 96, which is Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements. So that's basically for software packages. So back in the day, when you would go out and buy software and you would buy it in a box and it would come with a CD or some floppy disks and you'd install it on your computers, you owned that and you had that. Well, that model of software has really gone away and you, you buy rights to access software for the most part now. So when you buy rights to access software for a long-term period of time, just like the leases, you'll have a capitalized asset and intangible asset in this case and a liability relating to the cost you're gonna have to pay out over the term of the lease. So those are two of the, the big ones that are out there that could potentially have an impact on Portsmouth in the future. The next letter I'm gonna share with you all, this is our communication with those charged with governance, which is the Board of Commissioners. So our professional requirements have us communicate certain aspects of the, of our audit to you. So I just wanted to highlight a few items in here. The first is our responsibility for the audit, really echoes a lot of what's in the financial opinions, but it just kind of highlights that. And again, we call out those other entities that we did not audit that is in there. There's also a paragraph on significant accounting policies and that refers you to Note 1 of the financial statements that says, hey, there's a selection of policies out there and it's very important to understand what the policies and procedures are that the agency follows. So look at Note 1 and it, it gives you some information there. And we also note that there was no items that we noted to bring to your attention regarding unusual accounting transactions or significant accounting policies that might be controversial or new things coming out that there's lack of authoritative guidance. There was nothing like that to report. And the next section highlights significant accounting estimates because estimates are a critical part of the financial statement. It just wants to highlight, hey, there are estimates and some of the most significant estimates in the financial statements are highlighted here. So in this case, allowance for doubtful accounts, the estimated life of capital assets, current and non-current deferred compensated advances, and then the net pension liability is probably the biggest estimate that's out there. We also are supposed to communicate with you if there were any disagreements with management throughout the course of our audit. So if we come across anything that management has accounted for in a certain way and we disagree with how they've presented it and we have difficulties there, we have to report that here. And we're pleased to present there were no difficulties or disagreements with management in this audit. There's also some cases where management might go out and seek a second opinion on certain financial or auditing items and we would report that if we were aware of any. But in this case, again, there were no consultations with other auditors or accountants to present. And the last paragraph I'll highlight is other services. So we are an independent accounting firm. So there are some services that we provide that are outside of our standard test services. And in this case, it's preparing the financial statements, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards and related notes. So we just want to highlight, we did do these other non-test services, but they were at the direction and supervision of management. So there's no independence issues with us providing those services. So those were the highlights of the financial statements and the communication with governments I was going to go over. Does anybody have any questions or items I could answer for you?
Yes, Commissioner Jigget, I have a couple.
Sure.
I can't see the chair, chair, did you recognize?
You're the one, you've got the floor, Ms. Jigget, thank you.
I'm sorry, would you name again, the order to your, your name again, I'm sorry.
My name is Eric Rumberger.
Rumberger, okay.
Yep.
I had a couple of questions. In terms of the journal entries, I saw the adjustments and everything. Have these now put us in sync so that, say, next year when you come in, what are the processes were, we shouldn't in these journal entries adjustments? Could you address that and then I have one more question?
Sure, I think we're, we're very hopeful that will be the case.
Hey, here, I'm sorry, one moment. One moment. Okay, if you repeat the answer, please.
Yep, I think we're hopeful we'll see way fewer, if, if any, journal entries going forward. There were a lot of items that were long-term items that needed to get cleaned up, like notes receivable and how some of the capital assets were presented and which entity or which program they were presented in. So Shannon and her team did a great job of getting those cleaned up and straightened up. So we would expect, hopefully, there will be a lot less of that. I will say that going forward with the fiscal year-end change, there will be a longer period of, of the audit. So there could be some, some conversions there with going to a longer period that we might have to work through, but hopefully it wouldn't be anything significant.
Okay, and then my next question had to do with the allowance for doubtful accounts because I'm, I'm at a disadvantage here, I don't have the actual hard copy report. So was there an increase in the allowance for doubtful accounts between 18, year-end 18 and 2019?
I am not sure off the top of my head, let me pull something up. Shannon, are you aware off the top of your head?
No, I just know that we generally just do a percentage of the receivable. At the moment, I, I don't remember if it was just 10%. I mean, it just HUD wants to see a number in there, but I would have, I can go back and double check.
And that would be for the tenant receivables?
You know, over the course of the next week. And my final question is this, I think the staff is a great staff, but Shannon can attest, I'm a little leery, I just want to know, Mr. Rumberger, did you do any examination of the check writing system for PRHA? To make sure that there were no checks that, that breached the system that's in place through the computer?
So our testing of internal controls involved looking at what are your policies, processes, procedures? And then we tested a sample of dispersments. So in this case, I believe it would have been 40 dispersments is what we looked at specifically from a controls perspective to make sure all the invoices were properly authorized and signed off on and processed correctly through the system. That's what we did and we didn't find any issues there. We didn't go in specifically look for more in detailed issues. That would be more of sort of a controls overview to look at the, the control system from an operating perspective, which we didn't do as, as part of this audit.
All right, then thank you for your answers.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rumberger. Any other questions at all from the other commissioners?
Nope.
Mr. Rumberger, I just gotta say thank you very much for your patience with us during this past year. It was definitely a challenge. I can sincerely appreciate your professionalism being the first time and we were looking at about 15 years that we've had a different set of eyes. We're very, very pleased with the depth and breadth. We're excited to have the continued relationship because we're gonna have your same review of the, the other public-private partnerships next year as we roll on. So we'll be able to bring everything under one house. But we look forward to a very long and professional relationship. So thank you very much. And Shannon, thank you to you and your staff for, again, your patience and your professionalism also in getting all the documents to, to the auditors. All right, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you as well.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Right. The next agenda item is the approval of the meeting minutes from last meeting. I know we've had a couple changes. Ms. Marshall, I'm assuming all those changes have been incorporated?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes that's been submitted.
So, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a, I have a motion for Ms. Jigget, I heard a second for somebody, I didn't hear it.
Second.
Yeah, got it, I've got a second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Marshall?
Commissioner Barrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Coss.
Yes.
Commissioner Jigget.
Yes.
Commissioner Prince.
Yes.
Commissioner Wick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Yes.
Chair LaLonde.
Yes, thank you very much. It's been a, it's been another great month. And again, I appreciate y'all allowing me the opportunity to, to speak for the. Mr. Bland has taken me around the, the park and back. We've had some, some tremendous meetings. I know, I think this last time we met, Roberts and I met with the city manager, I thought it was a great, great meeting. The one thing that we both left with is she left with mine and I think a very, very positive thoughts about what the, what the PRHA could do for them. Just so you know, at least our standpoint, the, the four, four, five hot-button topics that we're trying to work with the city with and other partners. One is the, the partnership with the school board on the SH Clark property. We're looking, we're looking and working hard with, with the school board and the city council on that. The second one is the property at 340 High Street. Y'all, y'all, y'all found out last month that that, that lease is up in June. So we've got to have some definite decisions on that. The property around Lexington Place, we're looking for some city cooperation on that. And then Mr. Bland is working with the city, EDA, the PPIC, the Port of Partnership to try and have some, some, try and have some, some meetings with them so we can be face-to-face. It's been a while we've had any face-to-face with any of the leadership in the city and I think we've, we've recognized that that needs to happen. With that in mind, Councilman Battle met with us, we met with him about two weeks ago. He is definitely going to bat for us and has set a meeting, helped us set a meeting on the 29th of May, 27th of May. Mr. Bland and I will be attending with the Planning Department, the Economic Development with the city manager and the school board. So we're, we're at least having at the, at the level that we can get to it, those meetings that we can do to advance our, our causes and definitely these, the four topics that we want in addition to some financial arrangements that Mr. Bland is looking for and some updates of cooperative agreements that we have with the city. But we really, really appreciate what Councilman Battle has done for us and definitely what the city manager's done for us. Offline with trying to keep relationships with other redevelopment housing authorities. I had a personal meeting with the Director of the Hampton, Hampton Redevelopment Housing Authority and I had a personal meeting with the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority. And both of them, both, they're all both doing great things. I think all the housing authorities are doing great things, but both of them, and Mr. Bland will talk about it here in a few minutes, they were very envious of our, our moving to work approval that we got. They've been working on that too, they were not, they have not been approved. So we were very excited, we were very excited that they already knew that we were, we were, had been approved for the, to the MTW. The last one I got is, again, a relationship with the newspaper is good. Mr. Bland and I talked about the MTW cohort too and I thought there was a nice, very positive article about the, about the. If you got a chance, I know Mr. Bland's gonna put the audit in the mail. If you have any questions, please get ahold of Mr. Bland so he can arrange for any type of, if there's a separate meeting that needs to happen. If you've had a chance to read the newsletter of Resident Services, I'm impressed. I'm very, very impressed of what this staff is doing, particularly during COVID. But from a financial standpoint, I want to make sure that, I call it an elevator speech. So when you talk to other folks, not only do we have about 13 houses, 1300 places that we have people living that we manage as far as public housing, we've got the close 1300 that are, they're housing choice vouchers. Once you dig financial reports, you're gonna see that we are actually, as Board of Commissioners, have the responsibility of the oversight of $100 million in assets is what PRHA has on the books. We had almost $30 million in revenue. So we're talking big money that we have the responsibility for. So as we get into the committee remark, I think it's important that we always keep in mind that one of the responsibilities we have as commissioners is that financial responsibility. And the best way to keep our finger on the pulse is each one of these committees, what's happening with the money, because we all gotta come back together because that's what we're held accountable for, is, is Mr. Bland and PRHA using the best, doing the best, most efficient and most effective use of our monies. And Korn Resnick, I think, said it best in their opinion, all right? We're doing everything that we need to be done. So my hat's off Mr. Bland, your staff, thank you. And to the commissioners, again, don't take lightly this responsibility you have, $100 million. That's a tremendous amount of assets that we have on the books, all right? So thank you for that. I'm gonna move, I didn't see, is Councilman Battle or Councilman Barnes on the, I didn't see them. Okay, we'll go on to the committee reports, the Finance Committee. We've already had the audit presented, so I appreciate that. With that, Mr. Bland, I guess we're gonna have Shannon talk about the first quarter financials?
Yes, Shannon, Shannon present the first quarter financial?
Sure. They were sent out to everybody. Good evening again. So we had a really good first quarter despite, you know, COVID and the pandemic. But, so what this is, is this is for the first quarter and with the change in the fiscal period, thank God for timing issues, everything now is being reported for the same three months. Really, really makes having to do adjustments and stuff so much easier. It's gonna really be a nice audit, hopefully, this upcoming. Once we get past this upcoming one, which is gonna be an 18-month, as Eric had mentioned, it should be smooth sailing and then once we can get things automated, it'll be even better. Pretty much every property and entity that we had saw profit this, this quarter except for one small one. The other funds, all that is, is some basically small entities that we have, just like our 501(c)(3). Of course, a bunch of them are ones that don't really have any revenue that come in. But that would then just be a slight loss, just be carried over and handled by the, the management profit. As Commissioner LaLonde and Commissioner Roberts, it really truly is a team effort and it's not just my team, it's really an agency-wide, blessed to work with some really great people. As I mentioned in the notes, you know, management seeing a profit because our development team is taking care of those properties. Housing, really trying to watch our expenses. If we happen to see anything, we get with Director Jenkins and, you know, things are resolved. So I just, I say kudos and hats off to everybody. It really is a whole team effort and I really appreciate everyone working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Shannon. Again, Ms., Vice Chairman Roberts, did you have anything specific you wanted to bring up at all, ma'am?
No, I really don't. I think the team is doing a great job and we're very happy to have the diligent staff that we have looking out and making sure that things are accounted for properly so that we don't have any problems later on.
Right, thank you, ma'am. And again, you've got the financials, I would encourage all of y'all to just take a look at them individually. If you have any specific questions that you need, please pass them on to Mr. Bland and let him get together with the finance staff so they get the answers back to you. But I appreciate the work, thank you very much. The Development Committee, do we have one that wants to report for the Development Committee?
Yeah, I've got an update, this is Commissioner Barrow.
Yeah, I've got an update. This is Commissioner Barham. Uh, so Commissioner Cost and I had a meeting yesterday with Paige and Ms. Winston. That was a really great meeting. They sent us some materials beforehand, kind of laying out, uh, their goals, uh, and how they fit into the, the greater strategy of, of the authority. And then they also gave us updates on, uh, some ongoing initiatives and how they fit into those goals. And those two goals are, are really, um, increasing the affordable rental housing stock and also placing vacant PRHA land back into service. So, uh, we talked about some ongoing projects, some projects that are a little bit farther down the horizon. And then we also discussed kind of having that, uh, as a stand-up, standing meeting, uh, every a, a week or so before, before our meeting, uh, our board meeting. Um, so, you know, just hats off to them, very responsive. Um, you know, great, great questions throughout that meeting. And, uh, yeah, as Shannon alluded to, just really proud to see them driving the bottom line. Uh, you know, with the authority here and, and the financials.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Yeah, they, they really are doing yeoman's work. I mean, they really are fantastic work. So, Mr. Page, you're on, if you're on, I don't see you, but thank you very much for your support. Uh, Sean, you and, uh, your team there from the Human Resources?
Uh, excuse me, um, Chairman, um, Lalonde, before you go.
Yes, ma'am. Please.
I did wanna, uh, I did wanna interject with the development. And I wanted to say to the development committee, and, uh, Mr. Bland, you can attest to this, um, that your focus also, I, I didn't hear you mention it, but I'm sure you're aware that the focus also as a result of Chairman Lalonde asking, uh, Commissioner Cost and myself at the last meeting to, uh, also identify in terms of, uh, properties for the elderly housing. And so I think that also probably should be looped into the development committee also, as they're looking at different sites. Keeping that in mind, which I'm sure they will for elderly housing. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that. And, uh, I can, uh, affirm that that was one of the, uh, top items that we discussed yesterday as, as part of increasing that housing. Um, you know, a lot of that is being done with, with the elderly in mind. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good. Sorry.
Yeah, I can, um, uh, back.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cost, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Uh, you're fine. I was just kind of referring to what he was saying. I can figure back. We were talking about senior housing to be, um, developed at the, um, maybe the second part phase two, uh, maybe the, um, swan's home site, then trying to get, uh, permission to demo it. And then be a senior housing on that. And also, um, some property in twin pines for senior housing. So they have, they do have the senior housing amount.
That's good. I guess my only other question is, and I don't, cause I don't know the answer, does the housing authority own any land in Newtown? Can anyone answer that question?
I don't know. Let, let, uh, let Ed figure that one. Get back with you, Ms. Jigges.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Cost, done?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I just wanna let you know, uh, your picture looks good on the wall here, ma'am.
They finally came.
Yes, ma'am. You're looking good. Looking good. I'm sorry, Commissioner Prince, Sean, I'm sorry I cut you off a couple of times.
It's okay. Uh, we met individually with, uh, Mr. Bland and, uh, we were handed, uh, H R copies. And I think Sunday after next, uh, Commissioner, um, Wicks and I are gonna get together and review at least the first two, if not three sections of the, uh, H R policy and continuing to review, um, until we got it covered and then meet back with, uh, Mr. Bland.
Excellent. Excellent. You got a lot of, lot of words in that document. So you've got your, you've got your word cut out for you, sir. Y'all really do. No answers butts about it. I admire how you're taking on that tab. You just don't know. Don't know.
Absolutely.
I'd, I'd rather look at numbers all day than have to look at human resources policy. Ooh, my lands mercy. Right? Right. The housing committee, uh, uh, Ms. Jigges, Ms. Cost, who's gonna take the lead?
Commissioner Cost, you want me to, or, or I'm just gonna beton.
I can.
So, uh, Director Jenkins.
You can start after. It's just fun.
Say that again. I can't hear you.
You can start. I can finish. Just fun.
Okay. And then they'll jump in too. And I'm really going by, um, the in-depth email that, uh, we received from Director Thomas. Uh, thank you, Director Thomas. I don't want you to feel compelled that you have to, uh, give such an in-depth briefing to us in the, um, in the futures. I speak for myself on that. Um, I will ask Director Thomas just to talk about the little synopsis on, um, the applications received and the random selection. Um, I could tell you the number, two hundred ninety seven received, a hundred and eighty that were randomly chosen. Um, you might wanna come back to me on one little thing I saw in a significant and I think the security officer is on today and obviously the, uh, reference to Dale Homes and the gang activity. So, um, Commissioner Cost.
Okay. Are you gonna let Carol go first on me?
It's up to you. And, uh, Carol, Director Thomas, how do you prepare?
It's up to you.
Go ahead, Ms. Carol.
I'll let you go ahead and you, you can take it.
Okay. What was that? I did, I wrote, I wrote down the numbers too as well, that she was talking about the two ninety seven, um, application received and the a hundred and eighty that was picked in the, the lottery. And then the staff was gonna contact all of the, um, selected applicants for, um, to finish the process. Um, then I spoke with, uh, Ms. Jenkins, all of us had a meeting to discuss the, um, the gang activity. We was talking about that too. Um, the young lady that was injured Saturday was a family member of mine. She's still in the hospital. Um, she needed at least three surgeries so far. I'm probably gonna need some more. She was, um, hit and drugged by a car. I think during the shooting, she started to run and the car hit her speeding by. Um, I do have, uh, we did talk about when the police and I guess last sheriff, sheriff was coming out on the property. Um, it was Wednesday through Saturday, six P M to twelve P M. But this is like right in the middle, like eight o'clock where, where the police was supposed to be there. So I'm concerned that that's not working. Um, or is it not enough presence? Or were they even out there for that to happen? Um. So I, I know I wanna get with Keon. I'm supposed to give him a call, but I haven't. Um, but I still would have tried to discuss that, you know, even further with us that we can do. Cause a lot of the, the tenants feel unsafe. They got bullet holes in their car, um, and different things that's going on. Um.
Excuse me, Commissioner Cost, what, um, development was that?
That was, um, our Dale's home.
Okay.
So I don't know what, what else that we can do to make the residents, you know, more, um, to feel more secure and more safe in their own community. Because as, I was like, as I say, she live in Dale's home. So I'm not sure exactly when she will be back home or where she's getting out of hospital. Cause she's like really injured. She broke her, her wrist. She broke her rib. She has, um, fluid in her lungs. There's a lot going on. So, uh, I just wanna know what else that, you know, we can do to help the tenants.
Uh, Commissioner Cost, um,
Yes.
If Chairman Lalonde would allow me to address what else we can do.
Well, let's, let's, let's have, uh, let's have Commissioner Cost finish your report and then we'll, then we'll add for discussion items. Right?
Oh, okay. That's fine. And I know we went over also the, the movement to work. I just kinda wanna know the process. I know she was telling me, uh, Ms. Jenkins was still, was a little new. We'll still find out. Um, a little bit more on the process of when everything and how would it affect the tenants. Um. Um, I, okay. The last thing I was gonna discuss, I know with management, some of the housing, uh, management, they are, they are managing more, more properties. I know we have less managers. I wanna know, so I guess to try to address the staffing issue. Uh, cause I know, uh, uh, a lot of properties have a, a lot of different, um, I guess it's so big and there's not enough staffing to, to, to help, you know, manage the property, uh, properly. So I just kinda wanted to go over that as well. Um, I think that's all I had with my notes so far. Do you wanna go, Ms. Jigges?
I was just gonna, uh, respond to what you said, what we could do. And I, I mentioned this before, uh, to our board. And I still feel strongly that if the housing authority could purchase the Ring doorbell. If not for all of the tenants at Dale, at least in strategically placed areas, that would allow to help alleviate crime in Dale Homes. So I just wanna put that out there again. I don't wanna put the commissioners on the of who has the Ring doorbell. But I, I know a lot of us have the Ring doorbell. And so it's for me, that would be the way to respond going on in Dale Homes. And I, I'm out of record in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, Ms. Thomas, did you wanna report for the, for the housing committee or add anything to, uh, to what, uh, Ms. Cost and Ms. Jigges had?
Well, I, I'd just like to add that we felt like that the application process for the mainstream voucher program was very successful. It went very smoothly. Uh, because it was a, a targeted for a specific population, it kind of limited the applications that were received. Because we had the parameters set up in the application process. So if you weren't gonna qualify your application, you would receive a message that your application would not be accepted because you didn't meet the qualifications. Uh, but we did receive two hundred ninety seven applications and we used the lottery draw to, um, uh, obtain a preliminary waitlist of a hundred and eighty applications. And the staff is in the process now of contacting those hundred and eighty applicants to verify their preferences that they claim through the application process. And we're looking to have vouchers issued to the families for the number of vouchers that we have based on this funding, uh, before the end of the month is out.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Cost, uh, uh, let me speak not just for myself, but the rest of the commissioners. Uh, our prayers and, and thoughts are with you and your family. Uh, I can assure you that, uh, Mr. Bland here in the last couple of days has, uh, raised the issue, uh, this meeting we're having on the twenty seventh with the city manager and the staff, that, uh, security at our, at our facilities. Uh, it's, it's one thing. He's been giving me all the numbers on how much we're spending. It, it doesn't do any good if it's not effective in coordinating with the city. Uh, if y'all, those of us who've been on the commission for a few years, this was the one hot topic we brought up to city council three years ago with security of our facilities. Uh, we had some assurances from the police and the sheriff that they would do more. Uh, but, uh, obviously, uh, there's some, a lot of challenges that the city leadership's having. And we need, as you said, we need to protect our own. Uh, if, if, uh, Ring technology, whatever it is, uh, but you said it, this was at a time period that somebody was supposed to be there and they weren't there. Uh, so, uh, we just need a lot. But this isn't something about talking. We, we have, we have people, we've had people shot. We've had people hurt. And, uh, we, we, it's, it's, uh, it's definitely something that, uh, I wish we didn't have to take care of it, but we can't ignore it. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
If I could, um, just respond, um,
Yes.
I, I just moved from out of Dale's home about a year or so ago. And I don't think everyone realizes how bad not only the area is, but I think it was a total waste of money redoing those apartments. I, they, mine was totally redone when I moved in. And I was only there for a year. But by the time I moved out, the stripping was coming off of the walls that they just did. I had a issue with rat, mice. I killed like twelve mice in three months. And the paint was chipping. The railing on the stairs was, um, the paint was coming off of that. Those apartments are literally still falling apart. The screen doors were, I'm sure it was a lot of money spent on them, but they were worthless. It's, it was a waste of money. Something needed. In my opinion, I think Dale's home needs to be condemned. Not only with physically inside the apartments, but the outside. The trash with the dumpsters and, and it's just a mess. There's no grass. It's dirt. You know, it's, something needs to be done about. And, and I understand the police supposed to be there. I've called the police several times. And they might come, they might not. But it's always an issue, you know, they were busy or I've had to call numerous times with shootings right in my court. It's, it's, it's scary in Dale's home. It really is scary. And I don't think anyone should have to live like that.
Commissioner Wicks, uh, uh, all of us, all of us are appalled. That, I, I can, uh, you know, I, I'd like to say, hey, we could, we could fix the problem and, and we've inherited, no doubt, we as commissioners have inherited issue that it's still on us to fix it.
Sure.
You know, I, I am still, you know, uh, we, uh, one of the four issues I said we were gonna talk about was we, we as commissioners have made the decision to buy the property around Lexington Place and that whole area. Think about what we're having to do, because in my opinion, the city is not stepping up to saying, we're gonna help you. All right? So we've got seven of us. When we meet with whoever we meet, we all have to be vocal about it. Because these are Portsmouth citizens who vote in the city of Portsmouth, who deserve to be treated like everybody else in Portsmouth. But let me, let me go back. Ed, you know, about six, eight months ago, Ms. Winston said, it's so bad, we gotta buy the property ourselves. That's a heck of an answer that we gotta do to protect our own folks. So I'm with you. And, uh, you know, it may cause, uh, may cause some of us to be, you know, at odds with the council. But, you know, thi- this is a city problem. This isn't a Dale home problem. This isn't a, a, a PRHA problem. These are citizens, just like all of us are. We're citizens. All right? And I, I'm still reeling that we have to go beg with our handout for money to go clean up the property. So that, as I've been telling people, we build these beautiful places, even the ones that we renovated. I, and I got you. I was there when they were trying to do the renovation. But they're looking out their front door and they got a junkyard right across the street. And we gave them years of notice, years of notice. All right? So, uh, I got you, ma'am. I got you. And, and, uh, loud. All we can be is loud. And that's it. At this point, we can be loud. Uh, the governance committee, uh, don't have a report from the governance committee, uh, just a, uh, just to know that, uh, we have our annual meeting in September. So, uh, those, uh, those, uh, will be looking again for, uh, elections of the chair and the vice chair on the governance committee. All right? Mr. Bland, I've got to you on your, your comments, sir.
Okay. Com- commissioners, uh, you did receive the letter. We got a M T W and we're gonna be doing the rent initiative. Uh, and we'll be able to give you more information on that, uh, once we get started, once we put together our full plan. Uh, you kinda got some idea, uh, what we wanted to do when we submitted the application, become a move in the work agency. But we will be having additional meetings with, uh, the residents as well as with you as commissioners, cause we gotta put together our final plan to get it to HUD. And we probably will, will kick off the first part of twenty twenty-two with, uh, with our initiative as a moving to work agency. We, we was one of, we were one of ten that was selected. Uh, they had a total of over, over forty-some, uh, housing authorities that made an application. And they felt that Portsmouth was a good fit, uh, to be, uh, one of the, um, new, uh, agency coming into Cohort Two, uh, for the rent initiative. Uh, and the purpose of the rent initiative, we've been working with our families to help them to become self-sufficient. Uh, able-bodied families, especially for the, uh, elderly, disabled, handicapped, uh, other ones will be, uh, will, they will be exempt. So we want to be able to work with our families like the other agencies are doing. The goal is to make them self-sufficient, able-bodied ones, so they will not live with us forever. They will live with us until they get on their feet and move on. And, uh, the, the demonstration has shown that for the last fifty-plus years, uh, housing authorities have not had a, a, initiative to move families from point A to point B. So that's the purpose of moving to work is to move families. And with that, then we'll be able to, uh, house more family from our public housing waitlist, our low-income waitlist, as well as our housing charge voucher program. And, and so that's, that will be the main goal. So we're looking forward to the moving to work, uh, initiative. We think that was gonna be, is an excellent fit for the Portsmouth, uh, redevelopment housing authority. And that's all I have is we, 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 we have some meetings coming up with the sheriff department, the police department, to meet with the residents at Dale, uh, in reference to the issue, uh, that we, we know is a major epidemic in that area. And we're gonna be working very hard to try to resolve those particular issues.
We've had, we've had a couple of briefings, we've had a couple of briefings on the M T W cohort two. Uh, I would encourage each one of you to be able to reach out to Ms. I would encourage each one of y'all to reach out to Mr. Bland. There is a PowerPoint that he can pass to you that kind of goes into the topic a little bit better about what we're being asked to do. This is a six-year prototype that we're having to participate in. But I want to just read one sentence out of the letter that the commission received. Acceptance in the Cohort Two showcases the excellence of the work you are doing, addition to your desire to be even more effective in supporting the low-income housing in your community, and in uniquely responding to the needs of your local community. We are so glad that you've taken this, and that's from HUD. So, thank you again, those that, the staff here, thank you very much for getting us into this program. And we look forward to being one of those 10 that's gonna show that there's different ways to support people in housing, that's not gonna take money away from them if they're successful, alright? Now, do I need to get an approval on the resolution here?
Chairman Lalonde, before you.
Resolution, Resolution 2021-15, do I need to? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jigges, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Bland said, in terms of the move to work, and that Chairman Lalonde, you and Mr. Bland would speak to the mayor about nominating either Mr. Bland or yourself to be on the Board of Directors for the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. I see that there are quite a few heavy hitters on that board, including, I think his name is, is it Ron Jackson, who's director for NHA? Is that his name?
Uh, yes.
Okay, he's on that Board of Directors, as well as Ms. Little Hill, I think is her name, who's the Director of Social Services for the city of Portsmouth. But I, I strongly would encourage us to go through the process so that we can also have representation on that Hampton Roads Workforce Council, in concert with the tremendous stride with the Moving to Work. I would ask that we look into that, thank you.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate that, Ms. Jigges. The call you gave me the other day, I thought it's a, it's a great idea. I reached out to the chairman of the board, Mark Johnson, who's with Truist Bank. Mark and I go way back.
Okay.
We had very much an interest in it, so thank you very much, and we got the ball rolling. And, and as you said, we're gonna kind of need the mayor's head nod to do that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the resolution, so I need to, so I've got a, with, before Mr. Bland, he's got a couple other action items, but let me, let me finish this one. Resolution 2021-15, and I think it's in your package. I'll read the first paragraph and the last paragraph, and then we'll call for a roll call vote. Whereas the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority was notified on May 6, 2021, that it was selected for admission to the Moving to Work Demonstration Program Cohort Two, rent reform to study stepped rent. Now, therefore, be resolved that the commissioner revenues of the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority do hereby approve the Moving to Work Amendment to the Annual Contributions Contractor, ACC, for the Public Housing Program and the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and authorizes the executive director to execute the ACC Amendment in the form here, attached here too. So, with that, we need a vote to approve that Mr. Bland moves forward with our, with our Cohort Two for MTW. Ms. Marshall?
We've gotta make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need a motion in a second, I'm sorry, thanks, Mr. Bland.
Motion to approve as submitted.
I've got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Roberts. Alright, Ms. Marshall?
Commissioner Barham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cost?
Yes.
Commissioner Jigges?
Commissioner Jigges, with the S's, yes.
Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Lalonde?
Yes. Alright, thank you very much. Ed, did you have any other final comments, sir?
No, none.
Right, thank you. Public, PRHA allows public speakers to speak up to five minutes. Do we have any public speakers that would like to speak? Right, having none? I'm gonna read the resolution to go into intent to a meeting in closed session. Whereas the Freedom of Information Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for the discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargain position or negotiating strategy of public body as set forth in Section 2.2-3, 3711 of the code is amended. The matter for discussion, its disposition of real properties located in Victory Crossing, Churchill Land, Shea Terrace, Old Point, Cavalier Manor, Prentice Park. Now, therefore, be resolved and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and, and above references of Virginia Code, the Board of Commissioners shall convene in a closed meeting on May 20, 2021 for a discussion of disposition of real property pursuant to Code 2.23711. And now, we vote on going to closed session?
Motion to go in a session.
Yeah, got a motion from, second, we're good. Ms. Marshall, let's take the vote, and we go to closed second.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Barham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cost?
Yes.
Commissioner Jigges?
Yes.
Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Lalonde?
Yes. Alright, thank you very much, we'll close this one out. Make sure you check your, your teams.